For the, for the recording, we had to wait until an upload from the previous meeting that ran long. And it took us a while, so we went ahead and started our planning commission meeting for December sixth. In the last few minutes, what we have done is we have gone ahead with the items of, of, of number one roll call, public comment. There was no public, no one here to speak on public comments, items not on the agenda. We went ahead with the approval of the minutes. And then we moved items seven and five B forward, so we approved the planning commission meeting schedule. And the, and there was no staff report. So now we're in the process of item four, old business, and staff is going through the discussion, the continuing discussion of the Atherton municipal code, heritage treaty ordinance revisions proposal. We have some, some staff update on that, and so we'll continue with that. Then we'll open the public hearing for whatever comments, then we'll bring it back to the commission for discussion and action as appropriate. With that, I'll turn it back to the staff to continue the overview.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, so again, with the additional analysis and evaluation from our town arborist, based on the majority of trees within the town of Atherton, predominant species of those trees, their average age and species tolerance and health, it is her professional recommendation that trees would be best preserved while at the same time maintaining an acceptable level of continued development potential for properties within the town that results in a staff recommended tree protection zone at ten times the tree diameter. That recommendation is also the same recommendation that was presented to you initially back in April of this year by the ad hoc tree committee. Again, represented two members from the planning commission as well as the tree committee over a series of, I believe, six meetings. It's found that, that ten times of, ten times a tree diameter tree protection zone would most consistently implement the town's established goal of preserving its quote rural character as, in our adopted general plan, while also attempting to best protect heritage trees throughout. With that, if you have specific questions related to the development of the staff recommendation and the evaluation techniques that were performed to come to this conclusion, our town arborist Sally Benz Dalton is here to answer those questions. Before that, I just want to illustrate a few of the attachments that were included in the staff report that I also have available here on the screen for viewing. We've included some example photographs of heritage trees that either are in significant decline or have gotten to the point where they may be approaching, to be classified as quote dead based on construction. Construction impacts that while the tree was slated to be saved on the original development, but plant, excuse me, development plans for whatever those particular circumstances were, if the tree protection measures weren't being implemented correctly, if it just was too close, they thought they could do it, and then it turns out in the field it wasn't feasible. The result was damage to these trees. So Sally can walk you through these pictures and the trees if you'd like. What we also have available are mocked up site plans that evaluated the development potential under the four potential alternative tree protection zones. We presented this at the last meeting in July, but I wanted to make that available again for viewing and for discussion if the commission wanted. The conclusion that was derived from staff based on these alternative scenarios was that while under a twelve time TPZ, which again is the existing regulation, that while development would be limited or more limited than what it is now, it would not be limited to the point of not allowing any feasible development on the site. Probably better if I reduce the size so you can capture the whole site plan here.
We have a copy of it here.
You do, and if anybody in the public would like to discuss these, we can pull them up. But I think I'll go back to the photos of the compromised trees.
Let's go through the photos. And the, the missions had access to all this during the dirt move for a packet of this quite, why not?
Just tell me Sally.
So this is one, uh, this is before my time, but it was a site where neighbors have noticed that this tree has been declining since the development finished. I mean, you can see it's really, really close to the house. I don't know the measurements, but it's, there, there's an example of what we're trying to avoid in the future. Do you wanna keep going?
Sure.
You can go, you can go larger than that.
Try to make it.
Yeah. There you go. And you can use the pointer to make sure we're all looking at the right tier tree.
Um, here's a, here's, this is a large ash tree in the front. It's disintegrated right now, but recently after this development finished, which was really too bad because they designed around the tree, it died. I mean, I'm, and, and I don't necessarily think it's one hundred percent construction, but because of climate and because of construction impacts, those are all making it so trees are having a tougher time to survive.
Can you give us some of that, averages or approximately?
Probably it was, I think it was around, that's a good question, maybe ten, fifteen feet away from the front. Um, I wasn't, I'm not sure if there was a basement on that one, that's, I can get that information.
Yeah, that one, I remember that one, and that was part of their design criteria to optimize that tree and make it part of their centerpiece. So they, they really wanted to save that tree. They, they modified the design to make that tree right in, right in the front. The driveway went around, went, was lighter than normal, so that was just a.
And even if you do, I mean, there's ways you can build to build around trees that are better, but you know, not in all cases. I think the, I think the lesson is that if we could just build a little further away from the trees, it could help, help them survive.
One other thing I was gonna ask you, and I'll ask it now because it's relevant to this one maybe. Is it possi- possible think in terms of two stages of this process? Because they, you know, even though they, if we were to make it so that the wider circle was during construction times, the trucks didn't drive over the top of the roots, because I, I know, and the report talks about the crush root system. And then when they landscape, they can take that, they make it a smaller, smaller footprint? It just seems like when I've gone to the sites, I see these big trucks just driving around all over the place. And, and it might be that we might wanna have a little bit more room during construction than we do during landscaping.
Yeah, that's a good point. Most, most sites do keep the old driveways, which is preferred until the end of the project because the roots have already been compacted and you're not tearing up new roots.
Right.
Um, but yeah, once the irrigation stage starts, um, and they, most, most of the time they get approval to take tree protection down, but in a lot of cases they don't, or not a lot, but about fifty fifty. And so that's when machines should not be still roaming around the site.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think that's an enforcement, that's an enforcement issue.
Yeah, okay.
Um, can we keep scrolling? Uh, this is a recent one, uh, there were three oaks that died right after the development. Um, and, and they, they could have, I, I tried to find the arborist report before that, and they weren't, uh, in decline, um, they were pretty moderately healthy. And so all three of them died in a row, so I'm guessing there was a lot of trenching done and the roots were good. Here's another oak tree, you can see how close it is to this house. Um, and so after this was finished, maybe six months after, the tree declined, which is too bad. Uh, so the point is that I, I just feel like this is, there's a reason why back, back in two thousand and six, they got together and they said, we need to have a tree protection zone so to avoid this. I think in the recent years, uh, just houses have been encroaching, encroaching, encroaching and closer. And then these are the kind of impacts I'm seeing out in the field, so.
Okay.
So.
So what year was that house completed, do you know?
This was, this year, twenty seventeen.
Really?
Yes.
Wow.
Back then.
Yes, thank you.
We wouldn't have, we wouldn't have.
So the, I, I mean, I'm seeing most of these this year just because it's a combination of things, but, and it doesn't really matter if it's one hundred percent construction related. Trees are just having a harder time in general, so I feel like there should be a little more protection for them. So, and just to avoid things like this, uh, they could have, uh, I actually used this site in one of the other, um, the plans that I presented, and the house could have been designed further back from the tree. There was plenty of room on the lot, um, so I think it's also a design issue.
Yeah, I don't remember seeing any home that close to a tree that will be approved, so I have to go back and look at that one specifically. Because usually we have the maps and we're looking at that stuff, so I gotta figure out what that one was.
This is also before I started here.
It may not have required a planning commission review.
Oh, oh, oh.
So I've worked here for three years, and so now these are the projects that are, are getting finished after three years, so.
Okay, got it. So this could have been, this could have been something they went through on a normal process, yeah, okay.
It would have submitted development plans.
Yeah.
Demonstrated compliance with the minimum zoning clearance and, as Sally had confessed.
Got it, got it, alright. Cause I don't remember that.
That's just an example, but we can keep going.
This is another, is that a new one?
This I did, and this was a recent one where they, now they wanted to remove this tree, but if they didn't put a path here, it's leaning, but it's been leaning for many years.
Right.
Um.
Right.
Do you wanna keep going?
And that would, that would come across.
This is a recent case where this redwood tree, the owner feels like the redwood tree roots are keeping it. She can't open her front door. So the, the, the reason why I wanted to present this is if we moved, if we designed the house further back, whether it's roots or not, she was gonna have radar done to see if it's actually roots and if things could be cut. But, but, and she didn't necessarily wanna remove this beautiful tree, and I wasn't really gonna let her until I had proof that the roots were doing the damage. Um, but it's just a case of if we just designed the house further back, this would have been less of an issue.
Right.
So.
So, so, and like in that case, when you talk about designing it further back, what kind of a distance are we talking about, what kind of a difference?
Well, that's what we're trying to decide in the tree protection zone. So that's what, so that's where the tree protection zone comes in. So if you wanted to do six times this, this redwood tree, this house would have to be six times the diameter of the redwood tree back.
I get that.
Yeah.
But I'm just asking, what do you think would be, like, I, I can't tell how far away that redwood is from the, from, from part of that house. So in this case, as an example, are we talking about just moving that house back five feet, six feet, eight feet?
Um.
Just to give me an idea, what kind of modification residents would be up against?
This is a pretty large redwood tree, uh, so it would probably need to be, be moved back maybe fifteen more feet, yeah. Um, and also I would probably maybe on this part of the house not, not have a basement. Have a basement, maybe a half basement, that's, that's a way to compromise and, you know, so we can still have basements, but maybe just not in the area where the tree is.
Okay, thank you.
It's growing.
I don't remember.
This tree is in decline, uh, the, the accessory structure was built too close, um.
That, now that's an older structure itself though, right?
Um, it was, they, they were remodeling, it could have been remodeling, yeah, it looks like it's just been remodeled.
We had a couple.
So that was a recent.
We had a couple where they, where they, an older home with an older tree that was like stuck right next to the house, in the house. The tree wasn't originally there, but the tree grew to the house, everything, yeah.
Uh, and also another thing I'm seeing with these, with walls, is because a lot of roots have to be cut with walls, so I'm being really more, um, I'm just looking at walls more carefully because there are a lot of trees along walls, but we're getting a lot of failures like this. Our other trees are dying like in this photo. So this whole row of oaks have died, uh, along this wall. Um, and the owner's not happy because, uh, when she purchased the house, or when she was having her house built, um, she didn't know that all of her oak trees were gonna die, so. Um. This is a tree that I've slowly seen decline, and the reason is because there's buildings all the way around it and basements.
Yeah.
This was before my time.
Yeah, before my time, just one of those.
Even if we could just do on one side development and, and, yeah. Okay, so, uh, one of the suggestions in the new, in the new, um, standards is to, um, allow redwoods in the buildable area. So this was a recent site where this redwood was in the buildable area, so it was removed. I'm just giving this as an example because we are losing beautiful trees. However, it would be hard to build in that buildable area with such a large tree there, so it's, it's a give and take. Um, here's another site with redwoods that were taken out because they were in the buildable area. Or just, and they're beautiful trees, just really beautiful trees, um. Can you really keep going? Oh, that's all. So those are just a few examples I wanted to present just to highlight some of the issues.
We have a lot where a lot was split in two and that caused a.
It caused two, two new buildable areas, so that means more, you know, more trees could be removed.
Uh, for a point of clarification on that, second to last, it says, trees are suffering due to, due to small TPZ zones. And it's been twelve feet up till now. Are you saying because of a lack of enforcement previously, or?
Because of lack in enforcement, because, because for a while, for many years, even before me, that wasn't followed. That, that standard wasn't followed, that's why when I found this document, um, we thought, okay, well then this is how we could enforce it. But, but feeling that twelve times was pretty kind of harsh, we wanted to work with, work with the residents and the developers to at least come up with some kind of lower TPZ that's not twelve times. Because these are big trees, so, and, and Atherton, the trees are mature, so twelve times i- is, is a far distance to build.
Right.
However, when you build close, trees decline and die.
Right.
I.
So, so you go, so I'm gonna, I'll see Drew back here, so we'll get, I'd look, look forward to getting an architect's view on this, but there are a variety of scenarios where I think a lot of this may have been drought related, but also it's probably enforcement to Sally's point, which I think is probably eighty percent of it.
And it could be drought related, construction related. So if you, you didn't have the drought, that construction would have bothered it, but with the drought, the construction in that area bothered it, type of thing. We'll be up in a minute, we'll be up in a minute.
But my, my concern, if you, my concern is not making this more complicated.
Yeah, yeah.
It's to make it less complicated, but like, for example, where that wall was, where you had that tree that was clearly, you know, or the house that, that supposedly was just recently completed and you've got that tree there, whether it was six X or twelve X, that was way within that zone.
Yeah, yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
So, I mean.
Right. Alright, any other questions, staff? Okay, any, any other comments from staff?
Through the chair, just one more, um, point of a recommendation that I wanted to illustrate to, to, in, in close the conversation is, um, there was also discussion at the ad hoc committee, and as is being recommended by staff, for those instances that are unique, and we're acknowledging there certainly may be circumstances where, well, we have created a recommendation based on the predominant outline of what we see in the town, there may be circumstances that are unique. So the recommendation for those circumstances, if an application was not following whatever the established TPZ is and their request to have a lesser distance, that that process that be made available to them be similar to the appeal process for heritage tree removal that the commission sees now. So that is the recommendation, that if anybody chose to request a TPZ distance less than whatever the established regulation is, that it would be a request for an exception to be reviewed by the planning commission.
And that's not the way it is right now, which is why some of these got through, is that correct?
Um, I, I don't, I wouldn't say that necessarily it's why some of them got through now. I, I don't think there's an option right now within the existing language that gives an opportunity for exceptions. So we wanted to acknowledge those circumstances that may just fall outside the quote normal or standard realm.
I don't know if I recall any requests for exception to the TPZ zone.
Yeah, well, we have, within five years I've been on the, on the commission, I've never been asked for an exception to it either. So this was approved before it would come to the commission, and we didn't even see it. Okay, or at least in the five years I know of anyone, six, whatever. Okay, alright, any other questions?
Uh, I have one question on the ninety-five, uh, it says ninety-five percent are used for private residential irrigation on the, on the groundwater. Is there anything there that we need to know about tree survival, the groundwater usage or not? Or is there anything statistically there that we need, that we know about? Like, like, like lower water tables are either tr- are either the trees or anything like that, is there?
Do you have any thoughts on that one?
I don't have any facts here.
Okay, I just, I saw that in there and I thought it was, I thought it was like an interesting little thing to, to know about because if the water table's lower, that trees, trees aren't getting as much, so that was, I was interested in that. And then there was one other thing here. Oh, I'll, I'll come to that in the next item. Alright, and I would not have known what frid- uh, frid- fridary was without this report, so thank you very much. Okay, alright, with that, any, no other questions, then I'll go ahead and open up the public comments section. Go ahead and come forward and we'll start talking. Anyone here who's had public comments? Go ahead and introduce yourself and then we'll listen.
Denise Kupferman, seventy-four Atherton Avenue, member of the Atherton Tree Committee and the Park and Rec Committee. And I wanna thank you for taking up this important item after much time, and I have a couple of comments. One is that the tree protection zone has not been respected with respect to development in this town for many years. And I'm surprised as residents that maybe you never walk in the neighborhood and perhaps you've never noticed it.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
You see a wall going up two feet beyond the trunk of a very large heritage tree. And standard construction techniques are used. So I think that there are a couple of things that we need to look at, the TPZ zone, but also compliance and recommended or standards specifications for construction around heritage trees. Many towns have them, Stanford has them, UC Berkeley has them, Davis have them, and it makes a very di- big difference. It adds a little bit of cost to a project, but it saves the tree. And given the scope, the size, and the value of the projects, the incremental cost is not significant. My other comment is that compliance during construction is absolutely not followed. And I could hold you here for an hour showing you photographs of projects that are currently happening now in town. So I think that as part of looking at the tree ordinance, that we look at some measures or some vehicle to improve or put some bite into compliance. Because if we're not gonna have compliance, then it's really an ordinance on the books that's not followed as we had a tree protection zone of twelve feet, and there are walls with projects that are three feet from a tree. So thank you for listening to me, I really appreciate the work that you're doing. But I hope that as we go through this tree ordinance, we either take a perspective that, and we could go either way, if we don't really care and just are encouraging development, then let's at least be honest about it. But I think as a town, we should at least be honest. And if we're gonna think that these heritage trees are important, then let's do it in a reasonable but enforceable way, or just say it's not that important. Development's more important. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, thank you. Next up? Everybody's racing up there, so.
I'll, I'll say something. Hi, I'm Judy Kirik, uh, Pacific Peninsula. Um, sorry, I'm a little under the weather tonight, but I thought it'd be, uh, good for me to show up. I have weighed in previously, I, actually, I've been following this issue very closely over the last year, and I have sent in some written materials based on the initial kind of recommendations. I wasn't able to attend the last meeting, but I'm here tonight. Um, first of all, I, I've been practicing in the town for thirty years now, and, uh, I, going back, I was just trying to remember Kathy Hughes Anderson, Kevin Kilty, um, just all the years of design and construction. And I don't recall any conversations ever with them about tree protection, or tree protection zones. Yeah, so I think the construction, uh, uh, plan that we do nowadays is a great item, and Sally is very proactive on making sure that what's on the books is actually showing up in the plan. So I cannot speak to all the, those things that happened in the past, and clearly those were some egregious examples. But at the same time, um, you know, some of those trees might have been planted after some of those buildings were, were built. So I, I don't know the exact history of a lot of these things, so I'm not gonna really go into great depth on that. Um, but just to give you an idea of how we work, I do, about a third of my work is on the spec side for PPG, but two thirds is on the custom side. So regardless of whether it's a custom or a spec house, the first thing I absolutely do is engage a arborist of our own. Um, so I, Mr. Clinton has here, and John is one of our lead arborists. So we go into every project advising our clientele, whether it's customer spec, that trees are of issue and significance to the town. So we are by no means coming in as the big bad person, and I, and I'm not trying to represent those people, but I, I try to do the right thing and inform everybody that I work with what the issues are in town. Our second call usually goes to Sally, and Sally is always available as a courtesy. Before any formal reports come out, she will always come out and visit the site and at least walk, uh, the property with us. Sometimes we have an arborist with us, so two, you know, like-minded people are having an open discussion. So, you know, we just don't blatantly do what we do with, in a vacuum and not consider the trees. So, um, we'll have the arborist prepare a report, and then we'll take that into consideration as we design our projects. Um, what's been of issue as of late, probably the last three or four years, is tree protection. I've spent more time on tree protection with Sally, uh, in the last, you know, three or four years or since she started, and I, and I commend her for being very proactive and enforcing something that's been on the books. The way I've always understood it though, it's a conversation. I mean, there's, you know, there's tree protection and there's, first of all, there's different types of trees, and I think tree protection should be different for different types of trees. I'm not a tree expert, but the, uh, what I heard tonight about the valley oak getting special consideration is probably a great idea. Those are majestic trees that need a lot of buffer, so I'm all for that. But in my other correspondence, I mentioned, you know, eucalyptus trees, you know, we've had, I brought a couple items here for you guys. Those are treated on par with these other trees. And like I said, you go to other towns, those trees, the town will not let you build the project unless you take those trees out. So it's ridiculous that I have to protect development or building around a eucalyptus tree that's potentially hazardous or dangerous to the same standards that I do of valley oak. Um, so I think there needs to be, at least in my view, it can't be this blatant ten times or all or nothing. Um, and then I think some redwoods as well. Redwoods are fairly fast growing trees, you know, we've run into some instances that trees that, I have a lot of clients that have lived on, in their homes for quite a long time, and then they call us up and they say, hey, we actually wanna move out of our house, tear it down, and build something new. And then I have to tell them, oh, those trees that you planted ten years ago, they're now heritage trees, so we can't, we can't build in that location because we're violating the tree protection zone. So it's just not somebody coming from outside, it's also residents in town that need to be part of the conversation. Um, so anyhow, uh, getting back to tree protection conversations, what our method is now is to get input for both our arborists. If we are gonna try to build a little closer to the tree, we're building closer to the, the tree because some of these lots are heavily treeed and there's just nowhere to build. There's a, especially a commissioner Lamb here, there's a, just a, a property sold across the street from his home, and I don't know how somebody's gonna build on that lot because it's littered with redwoods. And, uh, I think you're gonna see if. And I think you're gonna see, if, if the new ordinance passes with redwoods in the building envelope not being allowed to be taken, that's clearly an unbuildable lot. So, getting back to the method of trying to inform each arborist what we wanna do, and then we've gone to some lengths of trenching now, trenching, exploratory trenching, basically digging by hand to see exactly where the roots are. And as of late, we've been able to show Sally, "Hey, you know, we're eight times tree protection or tree protection zone here, is this okay?" And she's looked at the roots, where the roots are, and she's agreed to that because, you know, it was good practice. So, I, I guess my point is, I don't want anything hard and fast, I want some flexibility to have these conversations. I also don't wanna have to come to you every time we end up in a, in a tough spot that we're, we're gonna come in and hear and ask, "Okay, can we go eight times versus ten times?" So, I think it's gonna overload you guys, and maybe it's already overloading Sally. I know she's probably one of the busiest persons in town here, so if anything, I'd like to make it simpler, cleaner, for lack of a better word, faster, easier for everybody, so it doesn't slow us down and clutter you with more requests.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. I, I have to excuse myself, I have another commitment, so I appreciate your time.
Thank you for coming. All right, who's up next? You wanna go?
Good evening, Commissioners. My name's John McLennahan, I'm a fourth-generation arborist, family's been in business in the peninsula here since nineteen eleven. I've been consulting on construction projects in Atherton, Menlo Park, Palo Alto, Porto Valley, Woodside, Los Altos Hills, Cupertino, Mountain View, mostly. I've seen quite a bit about what Sally's trying to accomplish, I've worked with Jude quite a bit on a lot of their projects. I think there's a couple of things that common sense tells me about tree protection zones. If we have a six X tree protection zone and somebody's demoing a house, and the house is ten feet from a thirty-six inch tree, we're in the tree protection zone. One of the biggest confusions that I see, even in the city arborists in other towns, not this town, is that you'll have a tree protection zone of ten X the diameter, and the fence will be this far from a tree. So, the arborist is looking at the tree saying, "Well, that's the tree protection zone." I say, "No, tree protection zone's way over there in the house. It's already here, and that's the house, it's gonna get a pavement put under it." So, we have to think about, from you guys' perspective, what does a tree protection zone mean? And then, here we get Jude designing this beautiful house, we're conforming, and then somebody comes in for a pool permit, which we all think of as kind of benign. But then there's a whole new electrical conduits, water, heating, whatever. I've got one in Palo Alto that has sixteen pipes in it, after spending hours with landscape, civil, architect, and so, my concern is that the landscaping, after we get through the building part, the landscaping is very destructive. So, I think most people that live in Atherton would be hard-pressed to find their own properties without some sort of construction within six times the diameter. So, it's gonna be a challenge for everybody to figure this out. So, I came to, I'm kinda stuck between Sally and Jude, it's not good for me to be here, but I came to support Sally and, and, and to present the, the hard part for Jude, because you're gonna have a really hard time designing around ten times. I mean, we've been writing, my dad was using five times in the eighties, and then Sally and I have talked about the ANSI Standards for Root Management, that uses six times, and almost never can anybody in any town honor every tree with six times the diameter. This is the real challenge. Luckily, we're blessed in Atherton to have a lot of space. So, there's a lot of projects where you could do that, they just have to sacrifice a little bit.
Yeah.
So, if you have any other questions about that development, I just came to assist in that too.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for waiting to me. All right, who's up next?
I don't think so.
We're saving you for last.
I'm Stacey Colby, and I wanna thank you for taking time to look at this regulation. As you know, Atherton is unique, because when you look at it through a Google map, it's green, and all around is not green. And the reason for that is because of our heritage trees, they're the ones that provide that cover. Smaller trees just don't show up on Google Maps. So, I really hope that you will work to save those trees. I've heard that over this past year, you approved every request to remove a heritage tree, and I'm disappointed in that, and I hope that you will consider saving and evaluating the requests more carefully.
I think that's correct, but that's fine.
That's what I heard from the city manager.
Yeah, I know for a fact that's not true, but that's, I don't know what the [inaudible].
Okay, if you can communicate with the city manager.
I also wasn't considering on this.
I will just point out, having been here for a while now, there are a lot that are diverted ahead of time because it's understood that it probably won't get approved. So, don't forget to take those into account as well. There's a real disincentive when staff works with people ahead of time.
Okay, good.
So, you might be getting pre-screened.
All right, good.
Not just to add that regard.
All right, thank you.
It's complicated.
All right, so I'll look into that too.
Okay, that was from the city manager.
Yeah, well, I'll look into it.
So, the trees can't defend themselves, right? And we are the ones that have to stand up and speak for them. Once they're gone, they're gone. I mean, those are trees that are hundreds of years old, so they don't grow back when you put in a little fifteen gallon thing. They are dying, and I think Sally's right, that construction is a major factor, and that the builders aren't being careful. We've seen how they've been cutting roots and compacting soil and not giving the trees the room that they need. The root area under a tree is as wide as the drip line, so I'm not sure how that equates to the ten X, but they need a lot of space, and most of the roots are in the top few feet. This idea of a taproot, it doesn't really make sense. So, you have to keep that whole soil area undisturbed. I think saving smaller diameter trees, if we shrink the size for oaks, that's a good idea because they're so slow growing that that will be our next generation of heritage trees. And I think requiring an inventory of the trees and photographs before a project is really important, because it's hard to remember what they look like and hard to keep track of all that. And the tree protection zone is really important during construction and during landscaping. During landscaping, there's often more damage because of trenching. So, we have smart residents, they can hire smart architects, and I think we can really get more creative with how designs are done, you know, there's a lot of different ways to do that, so that we can maintain the unique rural character of our town. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up? All right, all right, I had a pleasure holding up for a video. All right, is there anyone here else to speak on the item? Then I'll bring it back for discussion with the commission. First of all, I wanna make sure that Sally, I want you to look at this, because I know that in the, in the years I've been here, we've rejected several heritage tree requests. In fact, we've had a footprint on homes moved and everything, so I don't know where that fact, or that quote-unquote fact came from, but I wanna make sure it gets corrected.
Yeah, I'll follow up on that.
Yeah, please do, because that's just flat out not right. So... Then more importantly, let's make sure the city manager gets it, that he understands what the real... Yeah, right. Because that's not something he should be speaking about. Right, well, the thing about it is that it's not accurate at all, and I can speak from, you know, the... It's definitely not accurate. Well, a couple things, first of all, I know, I always visit the sites, I'm unsure all of us do, and I go back and look at them later during construction and ongoing to make sure that what we approved is actually happening. And I've called up a couple times, I'm saying, "Is that, is that really the basement depth that we're supposed to go?" And things like that, and that affect the tree. So, we've all done our homework on this stuff, because it's, the heritage tree thing is a real, is a, is a serious thing. The entire six years I've been here, it's like, yeah, there are two things that are protected in this town, the trees and the people, and I'm not sure that the people win. All right, so, so, you know, so whatever issue we have on the trees that could be related to other things other than the design, we've gotta make sure that we understand where the line is on that. You know, for example, I've got six trees along the, along the, the six large oaks along my, along my fence on my home that was built in nineteen ninety-nine, and I did not find them there, and they, and they're leaning towards the house. So, I've done everything I can to make sure that there's no, but that's, they're right on that fence line. So, I'm looking at those pictures, I'm gonna go back and see what we can do. But with that, then, let's, let's continue to talk, to talk, to ask, ask questions of the staff. Anything? Well, you guys at Rowan Committee, is there anything you guys wanted to add?
I was interested to hear them speak publicly about compliance, because in any regulatory group such as ours and others that I've sat on, compliance is always a problem. It all looks good in paper, and crime is wonderful, but the outcome isn't necessarily in line. So, I would hope that the town has a compliance officer or someone designated, of course, Sally has enough to do, that would follow up on these things. Eric says he's been doing so, I haven't, but I'll start, and it's something we need to look at.
I thought we talked about a holdback, what do they call that? Where they... Bond. A bond. So, I, one of the things that we were looking at in terms of compliance was, was create a bond up front and then have them earn their money back rather than be fined after the tree dies. And so, the bond, the bond, the bond is up front, it creates a lot more incentive to do the right thing, I think. And I don't see that in, in here anywhere. We can't, can we include that in this process or not?
So, in terms of process, what we're hoping to get from the commission are directional topics for staff to then formalize into a revised regulatory document to then bring back at a public hearing that gets formally noticed and considered. So, what these study sessions, what we were hoping to accomplish is direction from the commission. Do you like what the ad hoc committee has recommended? There are other things that you'd like to add on to it, such as including a bond to be added as part of a tree protection plan requirement. And then, prepare all of those documents in detailed text and bring all of that back to you at a subsequent meeting.
Great, that makes sense to me.
So, as part of the ad hoc, we did talk about compliance quite a bit and the problem of it, but we never really, to my recollection, came to a resolution with a definite plan on how to attack that.
Now, the holdback is a, is a natural, is a natural sort of process in my mind, because it requires a check-off to get the money back, which, which means that if there's a problem, then you automatically have accrued your, your cost. Now, it doesn't mean that somebody couldn't say, "Okay, well, that fifty thousand dollars, I don't care about it, let's kill the tree." It doesn't prevent that. So, but we do have an enforcement officer that is, I understand, is, when she puts on something, it doesn't go away. So, so she's, she's really good at getting compliance, so now we gotta track that. But one of the things I think we ought to do is really understand, you know, there's the folklore about trees dying all over the place, I wanna, would not know what trees have been done that have died on approvals of the planning permission over the last four years, let's say, something like two, two to four years. And the reason for that is, one, we'll be able to check our own, how, how would, how did it work as opposed to what we approved? Two, it'll be also one of those things where, after I stopped driving by the facility, the place when it, when it was all built and it looked like it was normal, what happened after that? Because there's no, I have not common or intense on people's properties these days to find out what's, what happened. So, if they lost a tree in the back, I wouldn't know about it. So, just something like that would be interesting, because the entire time I've been on this commission, trees have been a priority, you know, to the point of like, people coming up and making jokes about them, you know, what you spend, what's your time protecting trees? So, it's, it's one of those things, when it's gotten here, it's been an issue. So, to the degree it didn't get here, it might be a different kind of issue. But I think that, I think that, that bond is a really important addition to, to start the compliance process, along with some kind of check-in, maybe annually on approvals that we made for the previous year. So, then it would be the type of thing where, last year we approved these homes, by the way, just so you know, this is what happened. So, we started seeing the outcome of the decisions we're making, because right now, unless we just actively take, do a drive-by, or somebody says, "Oh, by the way, did you know that place was changed?" Because sometimes we approve things that's changed, that it could be changed later because they decided to not go for that exception or go for a new one. And that comes back to us.
There was one recommendation that we presented back in April when the president wrote the cumulative content of all the detail that the ad hoc committee recommended. One of the recommendations that I recall as it relates to compliance was to increase the reporting component of the implementation of a tree protection plan by the project arborist, so that they were, they, the applicant became responsible for checking back in with the town, making sure that all of the content of the tree protection plan, which, on a side note for that, the ad hoc committee came forward with a series of recommendations to, I'll, I'll call it, strengthen the details of a standard or standard spec, so to speak, of a tree protection plan. So, that was one of the enforcement-type recommendations that the ad hoc made.
The only thing I remember about that is I thought the frequency requested was way too, you know, burdensome for the developer, because like, there was a weekly element to it and a monthly, yeah, monthly. So, all I wanna do is make sure we understand, one, what that is, and two, you know, it, yeah, it goes back to the idea, if you make it too hard to comply with, it finds a way not to comply. If you make it easy to comply with and there's an easy check-in, then, then it has a tendency to be more complied with. But if you make it too hard, too orderless, people come up with a way not to, not to sort of, you know, come up with a way to either comply the detail or, you know, you copy off a previous report and submit it. So, I just wanna make sure that we're, you know, we get act, you know, that's what I always used to say in businesses, if the, if the system says the warehouse is empty and the warehouse is full, the warehouse is right. So, if the report says the tree is fine and the tree is dying, the tree is right. So, let's find out really what's going on on the ground. The other thing on this, let's go back to the percentage, I mean, the multiplier, and I have a question about two things. One, I agree with the ten, ten by, I think that's important. But I, and I also believe that the fixed amount is clear, it's the variable thing that's gonna mess everybody up, and so it's eighty, you know, ten, ten times except on Thursday with, with a cloudy sky, it's not, it's not gonna work. But the, the thing I would, I do wanna know about is, is why the, why the panel recommended the same amount on all trees? Because the eucalyptus thing is a, is a good, is a classic example, I mean, if saving a grope of eucalyptus trees, it's not like highest on my priorities. Now, palm trees are different, but...
Did they remove eucalyptus species from the list?
They're excluded.
So, it was my understanding that the committee didn't wanna put any more species on the you-can-remove list, because there might be some good species in each one of those that's worth saving, but that I could be a little more lenient on those species. Do you understand?
There was also, there was also discussion related to that same point on the aesthetic value that that tree placed, both on the property and within the community itself. So, while it was a eucalyptus tree, the aesthetic that that eucalyptus tree provided perhaps was important. And by keeping it on the list or not excluded, it allowed the town to enforce a replacement requirement.
Oh, that's, that was the key.
So, that was important. It sounded from the discussion.
So, somebody would counsel us to have, with an exception to remove an eucalyptus tree, eucalyptus tree, we'd say, "Okay, that heritage tree, quote-unquote, is okay to remove because we're gonna get an oak instead." All right, and then that would be an approval before us, and we'd be, okay, that makes, that makes sense to me. I remember that discussion. All right. What else? The ten by, is that, is everybody okay about the ten by?
Yeah, I'm concerned, though, after hearing more detail on some of the issues specifically related to the twelve times, ten times, and the landscaping after the fact, which then causes issues, that as an ad hoc committee, we, and I think we knew at the time, but it just bears repeating, that we were working a little bit in a vacuum, because we did not talk about after construction and what the landscaping plan and development impact has on the trees. and development impact has on the trees. And I, I hope we weren't operating under a false premise that by reducing from twelve times to ten times, people would actually start complying because it's easier. Well, we're hearing about and seeing in the photos examples of horrific impacts to our trees under the current, more stringent.
But those weren't compliant, that was just a given thing, right? Those were not, those were not compliant to the, to the, to the standard, right?
So many of those were prior to three years ago that were approved? So instead of me, when we found this document of twelve times, instead of me just from that day forward saying, no, 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 we wanted to go through this process before we started enforcing that. So my first stage of enforcement is when I see the plan, I look at it and I say, is that six times? Is that ten times? Is that twelve times? Yes or no? You can place the house there, you can. So we're going through this process before I start enforcing something that's on the books, but we would get a lot of not happy people.
Right, 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 right. But, but we haven't got, we haven't gone out of our way to make, make the spacing too small on trees that were before us, right? You know, we never talked about that in any of the sessions I remember.
No, it's, yeah, in this, what we've talked about is a tree being removed for development, not giving more room.
I remember we had a driveway once that needed, that we moved because it was arguing the treatment, enough room, things like that. Right. Okay, all right, well.
Actually, I have a couple things. Sorry, I wasn't on the tree committee, thank you guys for doing it. Why did, just logically, if our goal, and mine is too, by the way, our, we've been in town since nineteen ninety-five and part of our work is as a home builder, part of it's commercial, but we don't buy a lot unless there's a great tree on it or a bunch of them that we can preserve. Everyone's familiar with some. So to the point that was made in the back, if people are buying here, I hope they're buying because they love the trees and that they want to preserve them. Unless there's something that they're doing to flush their, you know, buildable area or something that they really don't want that tree, there's always that nefarious possibility and so that's there. But I'm curious why we were, just curiosity, why we went from twelve back to ten if everybody feels that the best thing is to preserve as much space as possible? Enforcement to me is everything because I, my wife does all of the residential, so I'm not intimately involved in it. But I know how much we actually mark ours out to make sure nothing happens to those trees. But why, why didn't you just keep it at twelve or why didn't you guys suggest just keeping it at twelve?
Well, my immediate thought was, in the interest of still protecting the trees but offering some sort of compromise that would possibly make or simplify things and still be workable for developers, but at the same time, and with a lot of input from Sally, still, excuse me, protect the tree. So I think that was a large, if I remember right, that was a large part of our discussion. So.
And we had the discussion, this, this commission about the idea that what we're doing in here is assessing risk, right? I mean, so thirty times is more likely to survive, right? You know, so fifty times is even more likely to survive. So what we're doing is coming up with a, with a balance of some kind to, one of the other things about after doing it is that property owners here expect to be able to manage their own property, right? So, you know, we don't tell them what color to paint it, we don't tell them, a lot of things about their design that in other planning commissions I've been on were a part of the discussion. So one of the things that we're balancing is, one, if we haven't had compliance and we haven't had a problem, then it's compliance is the issue that we've gotta really focus on, right? And so if we're not, if we're not, if homes have been sort of flexing between six and twelve already and we got, we've got an issue on the sixes all the time and we don't have a lot of known issues on tens, then I'm not, then I'm okay with ten, as long as we enforce it. Because for me, if we got a rule, follow it, you know? So if we come up with ten and enforce it, I think we got a lot more likelihood of protecting the trees. And then if we have an issue that we know about because of this process of seeing how it's working out, then we can always add two feet later on. But one thing I'm concerned about is providing the property owner an opportunity to do smart development. All right, so that's one of the reasons we were looking at some of these pictures. So why don't you pull up one of those, one of those pictures? So when you look at the buildable area for some of these properties, we wanna make sure that we have enough buildable area to deal with the type of homes that people wanna build on these properties, right? And, and part of the thing that I think we're always dealing with is that because this is not a new development area, there are a lot of trees just sprouting up like ten years ago and they just went, they were in the backyard, people let them go. And so they're now heritage trees, right? And some of these heritage trees that I'm seeing in the backyards are like, that's a heritage tree? I mean, really? I mean, that one's leaning this way and curling back and all kinds of odd things. So some of the regulations that I think in terms of the measurement height and some of the other, other modifications that we've done here help get us what I would consider to be real heritage trees. I mean, trees we wanna preserve because they create the environment we want and also allow us to build on the property whether a homeowner would want to.
We just didn't kind of throw out ten, ten, ten times either. Sally, as I said, had a ton of input. And Steve Alberti was also on the ad hoc committee, did a lot of research into other municipalities around the area and what they're doing. And Sally chimed in with the ANSI standards and stuff like that. So there were a lot of different numbers that were considered and standards that we looked at in order to see where a good compromise would lie.
Right, I remember the discussion on that, and Sally, you were, you were okay with the ten, right?
Yeah, I would be happy with ten.
And we enforce it.
And yes, I would start enforcing it at the plan check, which would be helpful for compliance in the field.
Right.
Because what is on the plan at the end of the project needs to be in the field. And then the compliance issue within the field, I think it's a problem because we have a code enforcement officer that is very busy, very busy. I do work with her pretty closely. However, we can't catch everything in the field because I can't be there every day checking. I have a lot of other things I do, just to be honest. So things happen and then it's an enforcement with me and the code enforcement officer, so then we have to go through a process. So I feel like if we can enforcement, enforce it at the plan check, at least a good TPZ zone, then it will be better in the field for compliance. I mean, we'll still have to check tree protection fencing and make sure people aren't trenching outside of the fence and things like that, but I feel like it's at least a step forward. And then we would all be on the same page. Because right now it's a conversation and it's really hard to have a conversation with every new development and every new permit.
Right.
There's no city that does that, I don't think.
A couple of things. So, so given the number of homes that are built in town every year, and I don't know what the number is, forty to sixty probably is my guess.
My guess was gonna be about three dozen or so.
Yeah, so four, thirty five or four. So I think, I think we have a pretty good batting average in town in terms of the trees and how they do.
Right.
But I think we have a resource here tonight, I know I always do this where I ask you to open up the public comment again because I wanna ask John a question about something, so I know, I actually have a question.
It's been a year though, I'm used to it. I always hold my gavel when you're talking.
Well, I didn't think to ask earlier, but I also, some of these things, they're.
Right, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing.
John, can I ask you a question?
And then also anyone else wants to speak again.
Sure, excellent. So, so, come on up and state your name and your address.
Yeah, right, yeah.
So, so I know it's hard to take me seriously in this sweater, it's generally what it is without the sweater too. So given where you, I mean, the fourth generation, you guys have done this, Athens is probably more like Woodside, Porto Valley, Los Altos Hills in terms of larger areas where people can plan out these homes. Who has the best tree protection? Are we even close? Are we at the top? What would you do if you were us right now rather than, I mean, it's great, these, everyone here is novice compared to what you guys know about trees. And I also wanna talk about things that get replaced, like all of a sudden you've got somebody who buys a new home.
Yeah.
They wanna put up a new fence, new wall, whatever. The trees growing up next to the fence that's there, what do you do? Or they wanna put a basement in, how much do those actually affect those quote unquote trees as well? I mean, those are the kinds of things, you're, that, you're great to have here, so thank you for being here.
Yeah, let's, I guess the, the first thing I'll say is, to the original questions, why are you guys not able to deny removals is because Sally is preventing them from getting to you.
Okay, good.
All of the guys that are legitimate tree contractors are afraid to go to the planning commission if Sally says no. So that's for that part.
We're doing our job, Sally.
So Sally is protecting you from a lot of those kind of decisions, I'm, I'm quite sure because some of us will scare the owners into, to, you know, the planning commission is gonna say no because Sally said no. With respect to what Sally's doing now, so, so say like Palo Alto is known for having kind of the strictest ordinance. Be careful what I say. It's ten times the diameter there, but I can encroach into that distance. Or the architect can encroach into that distance with the consulting arborist kind of backing forth. So you're supposed to monitor every month when you're in Palo Alto and maybe Melmo Park. Porto Valley is a little bit easier, Woodside's a little bit easier. Mountain View's a lot harder just to get approved. So Melmo Park is also very difficult to get approved. So, so I think if a lot of you went home, measured a tree and then walked out ten times the diameter, you'd be shocked at how far that really is. So the other thing is, is if you pick out a tree on the plan, say right here, and you take it ten x the diameter and you've got a wall right here, well, we all think, you know, if this wall is twenty feet away, well, then it's twenty feet away from the tree. But architects and engineers go to the center line of a circle on a drawing. So we might lose two or three feet, we might lose one feet, we might gain two or three feet.
Yeah.
When they put the basement in, if they do a traditional OSHA cut, boy, God knows how wide that excavation is gonna be.
Right.
So when I'm looking at them, I tell them, you gotta do vertical shoring here.
Okay.
So I lose another three feet.
Right.
So, so the good news about ten times the diameter is that, you know, by the time it's all said and done, you're probably gonna be closer to seven, depending on, on how the drawing is laid out. These are the little things. I just, I just went through it with somebody on another job, it was like, I need twelve feet. Well, then I get out there with the architect and suddenly he's at ten and he's going from the center line. I just lost five feet. So, so those are little things that make this job really hard for Sally and me on the field with the, with the diameter. So, so getting an idea for what ten X really looks like, I kind of emailed the tree committee about that when we were, when we were just talking about it at the tree committee level. It's, it'd be great for the trees, no doubt about it, but it's gonna be really bad for development around here.
The ten buy would be?
Yes.
Okay.
It's gonna be really hard for them.
You know, that's why we have these maps drawn up. Just after a good job, you give us a visual on that to see how much of a footprint impact we have. And these maps are done, by the way, on homes that are already in place. So these were, these were homes that were approved and to give us an idea of that. Okay, great.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, the public comment is still open, so anybody else who has another, if somebody else they wanna add? Go ahead.
Ted Haynes, forty-two, Patricia. I'm a member of the tree committee, though I lack the expertise of John or Sally by a long shot. I would just like to point out that I think our biggest problem has been compliance more than exactly what the rules are. And it's very hard to enforce twelve feet. And people ignore it, people come to you, people complain to Sally, things like that. And we may still have trouble enforcing ten feet.
Or ten buy.
I agree, but it will be easier, I think, to try for ten feet than it's been to go for twelve feet. And I think also, so the burden will be less. But on the other hand, I don't think it's, we should go to six feet or eight feet.
Right.
Because yes, we're still gonna have to negotiate, we're still gonna have people not complying, but we'll be starting at a better place with ten feet.
Great, ten times, ten times. Yeah, and thank you, good point. All right, anyone else wanna speak again? Last call. Tree climber out there. Tree climber out there. All right, all right, so let's talk about what we're recommending staff follow up on, right? That's what you're looking for, right? Direction? All right, so that's for not taking action tonight. All right, so one thing we talked about was bond. Another thing we talked about was ten, ten times. The, the other thing we talked about was, what we briefly approached was some of the modifications to the code in terms of height of the measurement, the four and a half feet as opposed to four. Those are all standards, Sally, right?
Yes.
Those are, so we're going.
So we're at four, so it would be better to be at the standard of four, four and a half feet.
That way we're not so alone. So those things all make sense. Anything in here that does, that we wanna highlight other than that?
I would like to just hear some commission direction to staff as it relates to changing the definition of heritage trees as it related to the recommendation of the ad hoc committee to lower the size for native oak trees within the tree protection area as well as adding redwood trees in the buildable area.
Adding redwood trees in the buildable area? What does that mean?
As a protected tree. Redwood, in addition to oaks, I'm sorry.
I see, I see, okay, yeah, got it. All right, that question.
Maybe it can't be taken down.
Yeah.
It all has to come to us.
Yes.
And I think that's one of the reasons we talked about that too, was to have the ability to at least have the planning commission take a look at those redwoods on a first case basis.
Right. I'm okay with that. I think the redwoods and the oaks are good to have as something that we would do. What was the first part of the, the first question you had?
To also lower the size of native oak trees within the tree protection area down to six inches.
Six inches of diameter?
Yes.
So the thing, the reason why that came up, because there are other cities that have native oaks that do have smaller diameter for oaks than other heritage trees. Also, a lot of, the sites just get cleared. So if, so like what Betty was saying, if we want these replacement oaks in town, those would be our replacements. So we're losing a lot of oaks that are under the heritage size, which is fine, that's legal. But a lot of, a lot of these oak trees that are just under the heritage size are getting removed. And those would be the replacement oaks.
But that's really small, right? I guess.
Because they're slower growing.
Yeah.
One of the issues with that is that, that somebody brought up was that now everybody's, right now, gonna cut those all down before, you know, this happens. But we can't go on the premise of that.
There was also a comment at one of the prior study sessions, by doing that, when you, for example, on a separate project, if you have a tree replacement plan that has a twenty-four inch box sized oak, or maybe I'm misspeaking on the size, but there could be instances where your replacement plan of putting in a new oak, when you plant that in the ground, you just planted a heritage tree. And maybe that's not gonna happen frequently, but I do recall that being a point brought up in some of the public comment.
How about a solo mountain? How about a solo, this is where the balance due, the homeowner comes in my, in my mind. You know, that's a, actually that's an older tree, but it's a small one compared to the ones who are normally called the heritage trees. I mean, I, I've got volunteer oaks that are that size, so I mean, this. I personally am less old on that one, but we can, we can bring, we can, we can bring it in as a paragraph to be looking at. How about we do it that way? Is that all right?
Well, I mean, it begs the question, should the value proposition be based solely on size? I mean, should we also add to the discussion or the thought process age?
Yeah, well, that goes, for my mind is that that's how much, the cleaner we are on our definition and the more single, the messaging is ten times, you know? What was the message again? Ten times. Okay, so it's, I'm, one of the things about the enforcement is how well they hear it, you know? So it's like, it's crisp and clean and something that people can say, okay, what was that rule again? Ten times.
But we want, might wanna carve out for specific oak.
Yeah, I know.
This, you know, extra hoop.
It also doesn't have to be six inches, it could be anything under fifteen point two inches. That's just the number the committee came up with. But it doesn't mean it has to be six, it just means that it could be just lower than the heritage size. If that was something you wanted to consider.
But, okay, so what I'm, I guess what I'm asking is, then, then we're saying that oaks are heritage tree of a different size? See, it's either a heritage tree or it's not. All right, so for me to have heritage trees, oh, by the way, there's this, 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 what do you call it? This triple A league. Yeah, you know, I'm gonna like, either change the definition of heritage or not, but not have this sort of like, oh, by the way clause. That doesn't make any sense to me. If we're having a problem with compliance, that'll screw up the plans in a major way.
And it's gonna make, I say it every meeting. What's making, what makes it easier for them? In terms of the work they've gotta do. Obviously, and preserve trees. Right? Hopefully, they're, we're aligned on that.
And I do agree, that's an incentive, you can knock down a lot of trees that might make it. Because I, you know, we know that happens now, when they clean, when they clear the property, it's like, okay, if it not, get anything out of the way is questionable, because we gotta protect the heritage tree.
Yeah, unless anybody wants to push for that one, I'm not really excited about that one. But if anybody wants it on in there, we'll put it in there. You wanna change the size of the heritage tree size, I can listen to that. But having a triple A league doesn't make sense to me at all.
So, so let me just make sure I understand this, so ten x, anything that doesn't meet ten x needs to get, needs to get sent to the planning commission. We hear from John or someone like him, we hear from Sally. That's basically the control mechanism that we have on it, the way you guys envision it from the committee.
Well, there's one other thing I was thinking about in this, and that goes back to our own personal follow up. So we've been doing it on our own, you know, whatever, you know, we go outside or whatever. What we could, we could, what I was thinking about is, at a specific time, you know, three months, whatever's point in the process, anything we would approve here that would be either approved as, for development that came to us, which means that it was some kind of an exception to make it come to us, will be re-agendized on this, on this commission for an update of the status. All right, and the tree status would be another one. So that would be an old business item. It would be normally a pretty fast item, once it was the update. And it would allow us to have sort of our own, you know, our own hook back into this process that would be allowing us to see progress and see how it's going, going. And then we would find out things like a developer who's, you know, last time they worked in LA in three thousand square foot lots, there's a big opportunity to develop up here, they go, golly gosh, I didn't know those were protected trees. We find out, we've had a couple of those where the person said, oh, wow, somebody told me about that. But we could have this automatic method for us. Is that, is that too hard for staff to come up with that?
No, I, just thinking in terms of how we would implement that, probably need to tag it on the building permit. You need to have some way of stopping them from just going all the way forward to come back. The easiest way that I can think of off the top of my head would be holding a building permit final. They don't get their CCO certificate of occupancy until they've gone through this reporting.
Is that, is that hard for you to do? Are the ones that come before us on everyone?
No, it wouldn't, because we have the online permitting system, and we in the planning department have to go out and give our own final inspection. So if it's appropriately tagged within our permitting system, it would alert us that, oh, listen, you can't go to do your final. It may pose some timing issues, because a lot of times we don't get that call to go out and do the final. Like, they're done, they're ready. They're ready for, and then we have.
Three weeks for us for our meeting.
Yes, yes. So, but we could think of.
Is there an applicant, there's an application of the permit that's, or that's before that, that, so they apply, could that be the trigger rather than the, I guess that's what their application.
It could, but I would think you'd want the construction farther along in this process before we reported back to you, so that we had something substance to bring back, to report on, right?
Well, let's do it this way, why don't you think about that? But the idea of our having a gendized review of our work is not a, even if we did it on a quarterly basis for the previous six months of all of our projects at one time?
I see, okay, no, so that would not be difficult if we weren't needing to monitor each project in its building permit base. If you're simply just wanting us to come back and report to you, and the house could very well have completed its construction a month or two prior to when we report back to you, then that is no problem.
Okay, we could do like the previous quarter, and the quarter we're in, and quarterly have.
Quarterly?
Yeah, that way you think. Something along those lines? Okay, let's experiment with that. Because what we're trying to do is not only get compliance, but getting feedback. So then the next person who has, comes before us and they say, well, you did this before, well, here's what we found out from that. We found out that this tree, this particular tree needs more than that, or needs all of it. And there's, just don't even talk to us.
But we'll know which projects they are.
Right, right, okay. All right, anything else then that you, you're thinking about that you wanna feedback on?
Just a few more points. So it sounded like there was commission consensus to not add any additional tree species to the list of those that are exempt from permit. Right now, it's just three different kinds of acacia trees and the tree of heaven. And there had been some discussion on eucalyptus trees and.
Monterey pines.
Pines and palm trees.
And palm.
He did that just for me.
So right now, the recommendation is to not add any additional trees.
All right, I'm okay with that.
Okay, okay. And I think everything else is more on the textual end of it, enhancing existing definitions for clarity purposes.
Someone did talk about taking pictures or video or something like that.
And that was one of the recommendations of the ad hoc, was to do a photographic inventory as well as an appraisal.
Okay, good, that's good. You'll get your photo. Redwood is hard, would you say, and redwood in the building area would be, and. At least that's what we're recommending to the, to the board, we're not approving it back. Or we're recommending to staff. All right, anything else on this one?
I'd like to comment on this business of making the oak tree a special item. I understand some other towns have done so, and I think six inches is kind of silly, small. But I wouldn't be adverse to making oaks, because everybody thinks they're so wonderful. Making oaks, some, something less than fifteen inches, ten or twelve even, would be helpful. I'm not opposed to that.
So could you, Sally, could you give us a net data on that?
I can give you a deck and compare with other cities and the age of what twelve inch oaks are.
Right, right, that'd be good. Another problem with that, at the same point, if you tell me that, you know, that other communities are twelve to fourteen, I don't, I don't have a problem with that, but it's also, that makes it cleaner. All right, anything else?
So that's, the next time that this topic is brought forward to the commission will be as formal revisions to the tree preservation guidelines, standards and specifications, and any associated related changes to the municipal code.
Correct, and then what I'm worried for at that point, depending on whether the comment, it would either approve or modify based on that.
You, what we would be asking you to do is make a recommendation to the council. If it's an ordinance amendment, ultimately, it needs to get adopted by the city council.
That's good, all right, that make sense to everybody? Okay, here, okay, cool. All right, we're having so much fun, let's do item, let's do, let's do. Thank you very much, thank you all for coming. All right, if you really liked this party, you can stay around for item five. Yeah, item five is a discussion of the general plan update, the process and schedule amendments to the open space and conservation element of the town plan. So with that, we'll start with the staff report.
So I'll start with the discussion component, just related to an overview of the staff projected process as it relates to the comprehensive update to the general plan, as well as the schedule. So we are recommending to update the town's adopted general plan. With the exception of our housing element, which is one of the seven required elements within the general plan, all of the remaining six elements have not been updated since two thousand and two. So given that fact, and the change in the community fabric, as well as changes in both local and regional state regulations and other town adopted policy documents, we would like to update and enhance our current general plan. The approach that staff is recommending that the commission take is to hold study sessions for each of the six general plan elements and their associated revisions. So just for the public record, the six elements that staff is recommending to be updated include our land use element, our circulation and transportation element, our open space and conservation element, our noise element, and our community safety element. Following the study session, the commission, similar to what we have done with the heritage tree potential revisions, of those six items, staff would then propose to hold a community-wide fora to discuss the potential revisions that have been directed by the commission. Take the feedback received at that community meeting, plus all of the direction received by the council at prior study sessions, and then come forward with a cumulative revised general plan, again, less housing element. This would include text updates, table and map updates, back to the planning commission for formal review, consideration, and ultimately, a recommendation to the city council. The schedule that we've prepared, associated with that process, begins with a starting date of today, here in December twenty seventeen.
That's the rest of our terms.
So you would be looking at a study session, five more study sessions throughout twenty eighteen. After those study sessions and community meeting, or how I should say, then we would also be preparing the required environmental review document under the California Environmental Quality Act, or SEQA, that's required when you do these updates to general plans. Come to the commission for a formal public hearing, obtain a planning commission recommendation, and then to the council for an additional public hearing for adoption. So that's targeted to be really, I, early twenty nineteen.
I would do that anyway, no? Something to look forward to.
So that's an overview on the process and schedule and approach that staff's recommending. And before I jump into the open space and conservation element, if there's any questions that you had on that component, I'm happy to answer them.
You know, there's one, there's one thing I thought of that I don't know if we work in the plan. You know, these, these rules from the state are always designed around normal communities, all right? So the whole, the whole, you know, the square acreage of, you know, open space and things like that, there is nothing here that has anything to do with the, what I refer to in my notes as not develop private open space is significant in town. That, so, so me and, there are people that have five acres of stuff on their property, and three and a half acres are open space. All right, so that is a significant difference in terms of how I would categorize open space use in this community. All right, so if you're, if you're in a, if you're in a normal place with a development that comes to you and says, hey, we'd like to have a hundred fifty units, and so you have a hundred fifty units, you have to have this park, this little, you know, place where the dogs all use. You know, that's what it looks like in LA, anyway. But here, you know, we have a small park area, but people have parks in their backyard. You know, I've got an acre, all right, and it's back there with all the trees and everything else. So, and I have a small block compared to some people. So it seems to me that this aspect of open space element is a unique thing to our, to our community that should be written into this element, so put on the radar screen. So when somebody comes up and say, hey, you're gonna have thirty-two percent open space, I can show you that we've got seventy, you know, sixty-five percent open space, but a lot of it's privately owned. So I don't, you know, I don't.
Depends what the definition of open space is.
Yeah.
Subly for private or whatever that means.
So we have prepared a draft recommended definition of open space. And if we go back to the state office of planning and research guidelines, there are six different components of open space that a general plan best address. Two of them are not applicable in Apotene, open space for military support and open space for tribal resources. We don't have that, we know that. But the remaining four, we do have. We have open space for natural resources, we have open space for outdoor recreation, open space for managed production of resources, which we kind of combine with the management of natural resources. We have open space for public health and safety. So what I'm hearing is if there's a way that we can try to describe and/or categorize what may be as open space or undeveloped, undeveloped portion of land on a private property.
Now, again, we're.
That's currently undeveloped, that could potentially be developed though.
And what I'm basically doing is putting something on the map for later. Because let's go, because there will be more and more pressure for secondary units, there'll be more and more pressure to break down our lot sizes, there'll be more and more. But, you know, to the degree that we start going on the map and saying, we are protecting open space game, and we're just doing it differently than other communities. You know, we're doing it five acres at a time, or whatever, you know, whatever it is. And it's a different method, and it's valid.
I'll just give you a heads up, the state is working real hard to break down any creative things that people are doing.
I know.
So I think that, just to highlight, that's gonna be the challenge.
And it trumpets it no matter what we do.
And I totally get it, but every time somebody does something creative, they come rushing in and go, no, 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 just because they're such a shortage in the housing.
Right.
But absolutely, staff is committed to supporting you in whatever way.
Yeah, the thing is, the thing is, the thing is, that such, you know, when I'm going down to town in Menlo Park and I'm saying, hey, we got affordable housing coming in, and we got four hundred units that are gonna dump on El Camino, and I'm stuck in traffic for twenty minutes going to Safeway, three blocks. I'm sitting there going like, somebody's gotta understand that this is a holistic plan. It's like, yeah, it works on that site, and then you got traffic. I mean, back in the day, we were doing the bar sites, they would only let us put one, one parking spot on these new developments or bar sites. And they said, hey, that'll force people to use, to use bars. What it did is it forced everybody to park their second car all through the neighborhood. You know, and then we had, we had the Two Worlds Project that had, that had work, that had a commercial below and residential above. And everybody who was living in the residential was leaving, and all the people coming to the work were driving in. So it wasn't like they were, they were walking to work. So, you know, this, this whole notion of density as a way to solve the housing crisis is not working the way we're approaching it. And I think we've just gotta say, okay, lifestyle is part of affordable housing. You know, affordable housing is what kind of life do you wanna have? And, you know, and, you know, what I'm thinking about is, if you look at, if you look at the affordable housing that we're building today, you know, seventy years ago, coming back from World War II, people were building homes that were, but we're buying for two million dollars here now. So now, people are building eight hundred fifty square foot condos that are, that are affordable, and that they're seven hundred fifty thousand, eight hundred thousand dollars. That's the, that's the housing base of the future. So we're building this bad housing base for the future. And if you look at Hong Kong, that's what they did. You know, it's twenty-three stories, every, there's a six hundred fifty square feet. So, you know, I think somehow we need to go on sort of record as to, there's a different, different type of appropriate.
Well, and remember though, separate of your comments, made Apotene's gonna be unique to anything, back to your point. So I don't know how we incorporate that without being at odds with the state office. That's the last thing we wanna do.
We're attempting to do that, though, for the circus club.
Yeah, I know, that's a private shop, right?
I never realized that was open space either, till I read that.
Yeah.
I had no idea.
And so, and so that's why.
And if we can extend that legally, absolutely.
That's what triggered, I thought, it's like, maybe that qualifies, so what about, everybody should find this five acre backyard? You know? Anyway, all right. My soap opera's around here somewhere.
You weren't passionate though. Plus, we had, clearly you've been thinking about that.
Yeah, I have been thinking about it.
I have a little planning commission with myself every time I grab an open ground. Just give it, just give it a few more months.
All right, what else do you, what else? All right, what else do you, what else do you, uh?
So, just to summarize without getting into the specifics of the actual draft revised open space and conservation element. Um, the approach that we took in, in doing this update was to, beyond just making sure that we included all of the state recommended guidelines. Um, while trying to balance the community needs with environmental preservation, the effects of climate change, we now have an adopted climate action plan. Um, we wanted to just enhance the formatting and the feel of the document from its two thousand and two version. So, that is the general approach we took, uh, regarding the administrative draft. We didn't wanna give you a track change version, 'cause that probably would have been next impossible to read, so we did wanna though highlight kind of what was new.
Right.
Um, and what was carried over that we felt was still relevant and applicable, given our understanding of what the town's, um, community values and, and direction is. So, we've put in there what's existing text, um, that we've carried over and what is proposed as new. And most of the new stuff, um, is taking into consideration other adopted town policy and regulatory documents, like the climate action plan that I just mentioned. The Holbrook Palmer Park master plan, the Civic Center master plan, um. And those kinds of, um, relevant documentation stuff.
Depending on what we do with the tree ordinance, page eighty, so we'll need to revise to, or happy, whatever, or three, three, I agree.
So, um, I'm happy to answer any questions on any of the content of either the staff report or the administrative draft. Um, and what the hope is, is any comments that you can give to, to me tonight would be integrated into a final revised administrative draft. But again, you probably wouldn't see this adminis, this, um, element until we come back to you, schedule-wise, summer of next year, when we bring the cumulative revised general plan to you.
And we really have three different, uh, species of bat in town, I didn't know that.
According to the CNDBB, yes, County National Bureau of.
I, I've never seen them, they must be up by the hills.
That's vennetale too, I've never seen one.
Yeah, well, the, uh, sap to just keep putting wood rat was one that was named to me too.
Oh, that one is, yeah.
Yeah.
Fragrant for the.
I mean, there's some really good, I have some really good learning in this, uh, report, so, I felt like I was in a biology class. All right.
Oh, the other, I'm sorry, one more point I'd just like to make also for the public record is that, um, this administrative revised version does not propose to redesignate any parcels as open space. Than what had already been designated in our adopted general plan.
Right. Well, and I would say that even if we made a comment about the, this other variation on open space, we would not include it in our discussion, because that would be a red flag. But, but what I'm trying to do is, if, if we were to say that approximately eight hundred fifty acres of town is open space, is privately held, you know, open space. Uh, utilized by families and their, and whatever, we go on, we go on record saying, our, our nature of open space is twofold, your definition and the reality.
Right, right.
So. All right.
It's a lot of information.
Yeah, it was good, it was really good. It was actually interesting to read this, uh, this thing, because, uh, it was, I learned some stuff that I didn't know. All right, anything else that we need on this one, this one, this one was, uh, actually, I didn't see stuff to add to this one.
I don't even know what I would add, I mean, even, I mean, I looked at it, it looked pretty complete, I just don't, I don't know strategy, which is what I think you guys gotta tell us, is, is there something you want, from a staff level, you want us focused on?
I, I mean, we tried to, um, going back to my comment on integrating policy that's internally consistent with other of the town documents. Um, one reason to do that, and you're not gonna find it so much in this particular element, but say for the transportation and circulation element, if there's identified capital improvement projects, um, that have to do with transportation and related, uh, resources. If you have adopted policy, sometimes that can help in your, um, ability to apply for grants or other municipal funding, so.
Right. The floods, the floods don't be the same way.
Yes, and the climate action plan, for example, grant funding for sustainable projects, or those types of efforts, so that's a, a strategy approach. Um, but it, we're, we're feeling good about this version, um, adequately incorporating it, but again, there could be some open space policies as it relates to climate change that come up. But primarily, we're gonna do that through our climate action plan, but we have it now in our general plan, so.
This is more cleanly written than other, uh, uh, general plans that I've been part of, you know, the, the prepositional phrase per square foot as ratios of downs, so you can actually read through it without. And, uh, you know, and, and so I've, I've, I've read through these and it's been like the best way to go to sleep, but this one was very clean, very clean. I mean, it's, it's, it's hard to be told you have to do something and do it, uh, in a way that people can actually read it and understand it, but this is a good balance of that. Very good job.
Accessible, much more accessible.
Yeah, yeah, accessible, that's a good ant word. All right, anything else then, you have enough direction, we can give you more. All right, good, all right, then, uh, and, uh, no one's here to, I'll open up the public hearing on this item. I, I was gonna ask you about page twelve here. All right, there's someone here to speak on the item, so I'll close the public hearings, bring it back, and, uh, with staff does everything they need to, uh, bring it, bring that next step forward. And I'm looking forward to the next year and a half, by the way.
It's thriving nicely, yes, you know.
All right, so we are, uh, we have, uh, item number six, which is commission members' reports, so anything to report?
I have a question, so, not that to be territorial in my little Almond Grove area, but those two houses that are, that have been the problem children of Atherton, is there anything new on those, or is there anything you? Uh, I don't even remember, the one on Almond Grove and the other one is on, uh, Ralston.
Yeah, I thought, I did, I, um.
Right.
What's going on with those?
Yeah, with Ralston.
You're asking about the status of one or two, right?
One of them, one of them. Come on a little bit.
Yeah, but still, yeah, and so, when you're at Walkin', it's, but it's gotta have been in this for four years?
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, well, that's.
Oh, that's the one that.
The one on Ralston's probably close to five.
Yeah, yeah.
The one on Almond Grove's probably three and a half to four.
Yeah.
So I'm just, I'm just cur, you were nice to update us a few months ago, but I was just curious, I mean, there are, they should be accruing fines, they should be, I, I guess my question is, you know, what, what are we doing? Or, I mean, they're kind of the poster child for kind of giving us the, or.
Yeah, I, um, I recall that back, gosh, a few months back, right, and I had, had to confer with the building official on where they were in the, um, plan of.
Yeah, nothing, I, I just brought it out of curiosity.
Yeah, it was forty-six, was it forty?
Probably, it's on the even side.
Okay, and let me check.
On my side all the way down, about thirty-six.
I know which property.
Two or three from the fire station.
Yeah, okay.
And then the other one is on Ro, almost to, Ralston to, uh, Stockbridge. It's the second one in on the west side of the street, or whatever that is there.
Okay, I will, we'll report back in the gym.
And they actually have a guard dog there now at night, which is beautiful, 'cause I walk in there.
Do them?
Yeah, it sits there, and it's fortunately, it's not a marker, but it's big, I would not wanna be, you know, caught with that.
All right, anyone else, anything? All right.
I move.
All right, all right, item, item eight.